I'd like to call the meeting of the planning board to order at 6:02. I'm Bob Dayler, the vice chair, and I'm sitting in for our chairman who is really absent but is out tonight. Under Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, this meeting is being video recorded and broadcast. With that, our first administrative item is approval not required for 17 Adamsville Road. Mr. Corey?
You folks have plans, man, with all the requirements written in our plan. I know there's questions about the strange shape of the lot. The current owner's intention is to reserve that land with his existing property and either sell a portion to a borrower and preserve the remainder of the land that's abutting, that's farther to the west. So that's going to create a buffer between this property and the stream.
Well, I think you were correct in the description of it's an unusual plant from its shape. Essentially, it's the circle radius around the wells?
It is.
And a little corridor, very thin corridor around the north end of the circle?
Correct.
Connects a little piece?
It does.
This is, this will be among the strangest things we've ever recorded or approved.
It will be.
Is there some rationale for the shape as opposed to just chopping off a piece?
In working with the current owner of the property, that was the square footage that was needed for the well and therefore the square footage that's being part of the A&R plan. That will be connected with the lot that has the frontage on the hill. It's wetlands. Majority of that A&R lot is his, his wetland system.
Yep.
So then for the well system, it doesn't have much value. It's a public water, it's going to be classified as a public water supply.
Okay, and that water supply is to serve the Main Street lot?
It's going to be served in the Main Street lot, yes.
Mr. Board, do you have any questions?
So this, it's a public water supply, so what's the setback for this?
That's the setback.
Yeah, but I don't have a scale to measure what it is. I mean, public water supply is 500 feet, no?
No, it can range anywhere from a low of 100, 100 feet radius all the way up to infinity. It just depends on how many gallons per day the system is going to be handling. This is rated for 7.25 gallons per minute for a maximum of 1,000 gallons per day.
So this is, this is exactly what the DEP is going to require for a public well?
Correct.
So why is this, I'm a little confused by the 17 Adamsville. I don't see any, I see frontage on Main Road.
It's connected with a piece of property on Adamsville Road. It's currently part of a piece of property on Adamsville Road. So those would be the, that would be the address from which the land is being taken.
Well, all right, so lot 5A is fronts on Adamsville, and this new lot is called 4A.
Correct.
And it's carved out, it's carved out of 5A.
Correct.
Can you, well then where's, I don't see where the butt's Adamsville.
Well, you see this, see where it says Woods Ice Cream on your display?
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's the Adamsville Road address that you're referring to.
Yeah, because that's 5, that's 5A, and that butt's Adamsville.
Correct.
And we're carving and you're just, so this lot's being carved out of it, but it doesn't abut Adamsville, any part of it.
No, but its, its current address is the Adamsville Road address.
Right, but just to be clear, it's not, doesn't join or abut any part of Adamsville. It's all, all, frontage is on Main Road.
Well, the frontage for the new lot, which that circular lot is joining, will be on Main Road.
Yep.
These wells, were they developed for this new lot?
They're being developed for future use.
So they're not finding existing stuff that's here already?
Nope.
Any other comments on the board?
Can you tell us what the use is?
There's around half dozen possible uses in the, in the mix right now, ranging from commercial use to residential use, to a mix between commercial and residential use. We've met with the planners, don't get me wrong, pre-David Yu, met with the assistant town planner to discuss the possibility of doing a 55 overdevelopment.
Say that again?
A 55 overdevelopment.
And can you, I agree with our vice chair, this is one for the history books in terms of shape of lots. The dimension at the northern apex of the circle and the boundary between the Shattuck Gallery and the Buzzards Bay Coalition Lot Line, what's that dimension?
I, off the top of my head, I don't know. I believe it's marked on the plan.
It doesn't seem to be.
The dimension is approx, I took a look this morning, it's approximately three and a half feet of clearance in between.
Between three and a half and five feet at its narrows.
Nadine, could you go to the next slide please?
Oh, I see, we're over here.
Again, those lands aren't anticipated through, on that boundary line, aren't anticipated through.
Yeah, so at three and a half feet's okay. There we are.
So that's, that's what we're discussing. The, this is, this is the wetland, it's a wooded, wetland area behind Woods Ice Cream Stand.
Correct.
So it's out behind Woods Ice Cream Stand. And wells were developed, these I think are test wells, not the finished wells, but they were developed, I think under some agreement with the owner of the Main Street parcel. And their, the intent is to create a lot connected to the Main Street parcel. But it leaves the wood parcel with a very odd shape, essentially a circle is cut out of the, the rear half of the property.
It currently abuts conservative land that's been conserved.
Yep.
So I wanted to speak, it is all wetlands in that area abutting the conservation land. So a public interest group is interested in the remaining areas.
Could it be possible to maybe use, if a public interest group was looking for the remainder of the property, could it be possible to use the buffer for the well, the cone of influence for the well as an easement and square off the lots?
No. Under the Public Water Supply Regulations?
Yeah.
The area is actually a full no-touch zone. So that's why the circle is there. Without the circle, there wouldn't be an opportunity for future access to the conserved area that I believe you folks have signed off on conservation as well.
Town planner have comments on this?
Yeah, so I would say that the criteria for endorsement of A&R, whether this is a kind of unique lot geometry, it's not really a bearing on, on the criteria for endorsing A&R. So criteria that this lot has to front on the way, both of the proposed lots will front on Main Road and Adamsville Road, which are public ways. They both meet the minimum frontage criteria of 150 feet. They're both in excess of 150 feet. There are no proposed changes to their frontage. And we also have to determine whether or not these, whether the ways will convey adequate access to the buildable portions of the lot. There's no onsite features that could restrict provision to the buildable area of the Main Road lot. And so therefore, my recommendation would be the planning board to endorse this plan.
Thank you. Any further comments on the board?
I have just one other question. Has there been any discussion, not necessarily by the planning board, but are you aware of any other discussion about impacts that these wells have on either other wells or on the cold water stream that is Angelina Brook?
Sure.
I'm asking the town planner.
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that you're aware of?
I don't know if there's been discussions in front of the boards.
And I'll ask Mr. Corey, Attorney Corey.
Yes, there's already been one administrative appeal to the state that was successful stating that it has zero impact. It's now subject to, of a negotiation between the planning board and a third party who is concerned with that. The actual freshwater stream is 900, approximately at its closest point, 938 feet away from the wellhead. So that's quite a distance. The river from Tetch Knapp covers 200 feet. The tests that were conducted so far have shown no negative impact.
Did it lower the level of the Shattuck well?
The Shattucks don't have a public water supply. It had no 24-hour impact on the Shattuck well. This is, these are wells, and this is misconception, these wells would draw seven, up to seven and a half gallons per minute, which is a very small amount. Most, most people's homes in Westport would, would draw that much for a maximum drawdown of 10,000 gallons per day. These are not low or drawing from the wetland system. These wells are going to be several hundred feet deep, so it's not going to be, it's not going to have an impact on the system. We're currently, not that it's part of the planning process, but pismeters and additional scientific testing has been installed, both in Angelina and Brook. The artificially created cow pond, which is featured in the western, northwestern portion of the circle, that's a cow pond that was, is spring fed, that had been dug. There have been additional, six additional test wells with pismeters installed in accordance with the desires of the towns consultant and interested third parties consultant. So that testing is just waiting, additional testing is just waiting to happen. But all testing so far has been negative, along with the appeal that went before the state six years ago, five years ago. So this is no different than a well that would be installed behind Marterie, the old Marterie, it's a barbecue place. Their well isn't a wetland. I could name a whole bunch of different places in Westport, including private homeowners who have their wells in the wetland. There's no scientific evidence to support the conclusion that would call causing doubt a degradation of a wetland.
Just one more comment. I mean, I understand that this is cleverly devised to meet the approval not required standards, but I just wondered, you know, instead of, could, could one have, and I say this because we're seeing a lot, several irregularly, very irregularly shaped lots coming up for approval, and I personally would try to see if they could, we could avoid those, but could, if you look at this circle and you take the southern radius of it and draw a line, an east-west line that's normal to that southern radius, and therefore divide the Woods Ice Cream lot into two rectangular lots, the southern portion having the Woods Ice Cream store, and everything north of that, including the circle, being another rectangle that's tagged onto this existing one, and just, you know, clean it up without having these odd corners.
As we all know, these lot lines, especially in a wetlands area, are functions of fiction. I guess we could do anything, but frankly, it's not part of the purchase agreement with the seller. So this has been engineered and ten weeks from Sunday to make sure that it meets the requirements of A&R plan.
What do you mean by not part of the purchase agreement? What is not?
The purchase agreement was for a specific land area, which is depicted on the map. That is what the seller wishes to sell and that's what the buyer wishes to buy.
Yeah, well, I understand that, I just would hope that sometimes people would consider things a little more reasonably.
Well, it was, believe me, that's, this is what was come up with after many years.
Any further comments on the board? Is there a motion?
So, want me to make the motion? Chris, please.
Thank you.
There is no motion. So I move, we approve this application for 17 Adamsville Road, assessor's map 77 Lot 12, Lot 12D for approval not required.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next administrative item, planning board pre-schedule, proposed modifications. Plan?
Yeah, so, and this is more just for your reference, but the town administrator requested that we take a look at, have a regional look at what other communities are doing, their planning board pre-schedules, as well as other, other town boards and committees, and so what I have brought before you all is bringing us more in mind with what's being charged in adjacent communities. We are looking at acquiring online permitting, and so I think we can hold off on voting on any amendments to the pre-schedule until we know more about implementing online permitting, just because we would have to charge a little bit more in our applications in order to have the permitting services.
The time limits on public comment.
So.
It's a policy decision by the planning board, right?
That's correct. At the last planning board meeting, it was voted to, for the planning board to follow the town moderators guidelines for public comment at town meeting, and so public comment will now be limited to a five-minute period, or each person who would wish to speak is, will now be limited to five minutes. So that's the policy.
We will try to implement that today. It being 6:15, that concludes the administrative items that we have. It being 6:15, actually 6:20, it's time for our first public hearing. Salty Breeze Inc., filing number 23032, SPA and SPRM 260 State Road, request by the applicant to remodel a vacant retail building for recreational marijuana dispensary.
John Connell, Northeast Engineers, here with Salty Breeze. Brian Carney is the applicant, consultant for the applicant. We will get people's plans up on the board.
Which one do you want?
The existing site where it was in, is a marijuana dispensary, it's 260 State Road, the north side of State Road. If you look at the site, you've got a large button to the back, an existing 2,600 square foot plus minus building, paved parking and access, a horseshoe basically driveway coming in on Route 6, and the pavement's really beat up, small, also be a, we would propose the old new parking alignment in accordance with the regulations, 20 four-foot wide aisle, nine by, nine by 20 spaces, two accessible spaces, one band accessible, 15 total spaces. You'll see a dumpster pad out in the back there, and then four spaces in the back that dedicate, not exclusively, but to the, to the four potential employees of the building. Regarding drainage, we have to deal with Mass DOT on this as well. We've taken all the drainage that now comes to the front of the site and pushed that to the back. We've met significant reductions, anywhere between 16 and I think it's 20, 16 and 25 percent overall, and now to Route 6 square, over 70 percent flow reduction, runoff rates out to Route 6. Regarding water quality, we proposed a storm step out there, that would be an access of the 80 percent TSS removal, some landscaping, some side landscaping as well, concrete walkway on the building, access to the back, deliveries would be via the, the front access flooded to back door. And again, being on Route 6 State Highway, we're going to have to go through Mass DOT, so wherever are you anticipating that, that access there, we've gone down from two, two access drives to one, which Mass DOT ultimately, I believe, will ask for, as well as the radii, adequate radii, 30-foot radii, and then the intercepting, all of the runoff going out from the pavement being a trench drain in the detention basin in back, you can see the grating there. Existing septic system to the left of the building, to the side, left-hand side of the building, usable water and overhead electric telephone cable, that, that will all remain. We're not proposing to do any of that, proposal details. With that, if anyone had any questions regarding engineering or the operations, we'd be happy to try to answer those.
Regarding the changes in this, just by its very nature of its application, I mean, this is an allowed use in the, this is in the business district in the entertainment overlay, and so it is an allowed use. Other, what, besides the interior changes in the building, are there exterior changes, lighting changes, those types of things on existing buildings? I understand you're not changing the footprint there.
Correct. No, besides landscape, you know, defined place, landscape architecture, there's no major lighting changes, no major structural changes. We're gonna, of course, pretty on the inside, but that's it. Building's already in really good shape.
Is the facility simply a sales facility, or are you growing as well?
Just retail, no intentions of ever growing into product manufacturing or cultivation, just retail.
So the, the plumbing fixtures inside are strictly for toilet use?
Employees, we are gonna have well under 25 people in the store at any time. We have one, we have handicap accessible bathrooms, you know, we're gonna use them just for employees, there are gonna be public bathrooms, so we have plenty of bathroom usage for the four meters that we're gonna have.
I looked at the drainage, and we have comments, I don't think we have comments from our peer review consultant.
We do not have comments from the consulting agent, correct?
Does members of the board have any comments?
So do you have any plans to dress up the facade a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, so the outside, you know, we're gonna do landscaping, I believe we're gonna redo the whole parking lot, you know, blacktop, make it look very pretty. The signage, of course, will be in accordance with local bylaws, no crazy lights, nothing like that. We aesthetically want it to fit the aesthetic of the town, that's why we call it Salty Breeze, we want it to look like, you know, Mariners theme, if you will. So we want it to fit into the community, there's not going to be any neon colors, anything crazy to have it stand out. We want it to fit the vibe of the community.
Yeah, I kind of, I kind of have this thing about, about that fitting into the community, like I keep saying Common Farms, the two that we have don't fit into the community, but you look at what Common Farms does everywhere else, like a Cape Cod style shack type, you know? I like your name, Salty Breeze, and I mean, I think you probably will do well if you can.
Really appreciate it.
A lot of.
Other comments on the board?
Well, I note that department reviews have disapproval, are gonna get their responses to the comments from departments.
We certainly can ask you, have you, have you seen those responses? So we, we had two disapproval comments, or three actually. The Board of Health about the use of the reuse of the existing septic system, and also about prior contamination on the site. Conservation Commission has also commented on disapproval, and that's because the parking area, as is presently designed, encroaches on the 25-foot no disturber buffer zone. And the fire department recommended disapproval because of the code, the code and requirements of the facility to be tied into the fire station. So those, those comments, we will take into consideration, we're also still waiting to receive comments from our peer review consultant.
Any reaction to those, or?
Mike?
The one initial reaction to the septic system, I believe, and perhaps even fire code is, I just want to make it clear that we are, we are just a retail store, we are not cultivation at all. So I think when looking at the septic system being handled, water flow, again, we're not going to be using tremendous power, it's just that, you know, that thing for the employees. So we just want to be clear and everyone's understanding that this is just retail, this is not tremendous power.
Yeah, I think that might be the case, because if you do have a, this is a cultivation facility on a septic, there's a lot of stuff that goes down the drain, which is.
You would have to have a treatment.
Yeah, you'd have to almost either go and You, you'd have to almost either go into sewer or something extreme to treat that waste. It's agricultural waste. So I, I think that might be part of the thing. They also, I think, questioned the, the amount of flow, which I think we're under, to be honest with you. I'll definitely ask them. I, I stocked up the office to look at the plan. It's rated for a hundred and thirty-seven gallons per day, which I don't think we're going to exceed as a retail use. So I, I will, um, review that with them. Um, the, the fire department mentioned, I, I think it, they might also think that, that they're gonna be doing some drawing in there or something where it might be a fire hazard. So, I, I haven't spoken to the fire department, but certainly, um, I, you know, one of us will, will speak with the fire department. Conservation, um, my understanding is that that twenty-five foot isn't in the bylaw. That's kind of a, they like to see that. Um, I've seen projects, we've done projects where we've been in there before. But we've always tried to offset it with other things that we're doing on site. We're not just going in, um, for the sake of going in. In this case, we have an existing building. The, the bylaws require the, the nine by, um, what? Hundred eighty square foot parking spaces. So we do the twenty by nine. The tens just get so wide that we, you know, twenty by nines is, is a better, um, layout, in my opinion. So we use those. I mean, if we went to the, the, uh, the eighteen by tens, maybe I can squeeze it a little bit further. But I'm kinda wedged between that well and, and the existing building to, to provide access around the entire building. So it, it's not like I'm, I want to go into the twenty-five. But, and I was hoping to speak to them when we go for the notice of intent as to why, you know, what, what is our rationale there?
As, as you know, we don't, we don't approve the septic system, nor do we, nor do we the Conservation Commission. But, but if you had to make changes for, for instance, if you had to rebuild the system, and then that requires regrading here, that falls back in front of us. So I wonder, you automatically trigger the, it's not automatic, but you do trigger the, uh, the site plan review, which is really what's before us. So it's, it's really up to you to resolve those kinds of issues. And, and, you know, the, the, the board, by its nature and cooperation with the other, uh, regulatory bodies in the town, we don't ignore these comments, and we would certainly consider them in a decision. So getting, getting that resolved is, is truly important.
Good day. In regards to the Board of Health comments. Did, did you pass Title V for that existing?
There was a note that they wanted it to do Title V. I'm not aware that the Title V was done. An, an Title V inspection of the system.
Well, another thing, and the Board of Health's aware of this. We do have a completed sewer design that runs right in front of that project. And we are currently actively seeking funding. So you might wanna just run that by the Board of Health, like, you're willing to tie that building in as soon as the sewer comes by. And we'd like to be the first customer. I, I mean, I'd also like to make note that the, the competitor next door, the existing septic system for a building that was demolished was used for his new facility that they built. So I, I don't think that would be a cost that should be burdened on you with sewer coming down the road. As long as it's not a public health threat. If it's a public health threat, you're gonna have to bring something up to compliance. But other than that, you can seek a variance from them until the sewer comes by.
If there are no other comments right now from the board, uh, this is a public hearing and we would open it to public comment.
Thank you.
Through the chair, um, Mr. Taylor. With regards to this site, um, and we're kind of coming, I'm representing Coastal Healing right next door. So we're coming in kind of behind the eight wall. They were unaware until approximately ten days ago that this hearing was gonna take place. They weren't aware that a new facility was being, uh, proposed next door. Um, having been, been through, uh, the hearings here in Westport on behalf of Coastal Healing, as well as in five other communities, um, I'm wondering where these plans stand. Is this simply an exploratory meeting? Because the site plan review that we've gone through in the town of Westport, not just for this facility, but for CBS, for Cumberland Farms, for other commercial businesses over the past ten or twelve years that have wanted to be in Westport or come and develop with the Westport, are required to have much more in-depth plans. Photogrammetry studies, uh, impact on drainage, drainage impact on neighboring parcels. Very, I could go through a litney, I have a, I have a whole checklist that I go through with commercial clients for Westport, according to site plan review. Has the, through the board, has the applicant submitted interior designs designating storage areas, safety areas for storage of products, safe rooms, and secure areas for the, uh, separate storage of, uh, money and marijuana? Uh, what's the breakdown? I'd ask the board, what's the breakdown between retail area and warehousing area? What are, are the proposed hours of operation for this facility? Uh, what is the, although we understand it's a twenty-five foot wish list, uh, has the wetlands line, uh, been approved for this project? Uh, all of these questions, I don't know the answers to as, as of yet. Uh, but if, if those, if those aren't part of the site plan review package, then it's premature. And I'd state that the board really should be continuing this until the applicant supplements this project. Um, additionally, with regards to that building. That building's been unused. I don't know for how long. It was Beano's Garage, then it was nothing, then it was a, uh, some sort of a very small, I believe, Goodwill shop at one point. Then they put some stucco on the outside and said, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna try to sell it. Nothing's been there. The, the park, to characterize the parking lot as currently paved, I think is generous. I'm unaware of, having looked at that parcel as part of another project for another client, unaware of any, any, uh, drainage system that exists in the parking lot itself. I heard reference a seventy percent reduction. And through the, through the chair, does that meet the requirement, the current requirements, um, under both planning regulations and the site plan review regulations? Very elaborate, other projects have required, not just Coastal next door, but other projects have required very elaborate rain gardens in order to meet the low-impact development standards that the town promotes. I'd say that I'm all for facilities, I, I represent them throughout the state of Massachusetts, both retail and cultivation sectors. And I'd state that the plan is submitted, does not meet the requirements in any way, shape, or form. I anticipate this board will be continuing. And I just ask you to give it the same amount of scrutiny as you did next door. I think we all remember how extensive the hearings were for Coastal Healing. So, uh, and I'd also like you to consider that special permit grants for these facilities are a privilege. Um, I don't know if this board, much like the select board, in all, in past discussions, looks to dilute a certain business holder's business. And the issues of, of, to give you an analogous situation, the issuance of liquor store applications or applications to sell liquor in the town of Westport. The discussion has always been, well, we, we're not gonna put one right next door to another. And that was also discussed when the zone was, um, was analyzed by Mr. Hart, the former, the former town, uh, town planner. So I ask you to look in very carefully and give it the same scrutiny that you've given not just the cannabis facility next door, but CBS, Cumberland Farms, and other commercial developments, um, right across the street. The site plan review that was required for Mid-City Steel across the street was very, very extensive. Um, so let, make them meet the same requirements, along with the expanded security requirements that these facilities, uh, are required to have both under state law and under the, uh, requirements that you've had for Coastal Healing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. We, uh, speaking for the board, we always try to do our job.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Is there a motion from the board? Oh, I'm sorry. The town planner, do we have any, any reports from peer reviewing?
So I share some of the concerns about the completeness of this application. I don't wanna go over a whole list in fine detail because we do have another public hearing to get to. Um, but there are some fine details, as were mentioned, um, as was just mentioned, like, um, the lighting details, the make and model of those lighting. Um, the, uh, there needs to be a walkway from the business connecting to the sidewalk on Route six. We need to know the closure materials of the dumpster area. And I'll provide all these, um, all these details to, to the applicant, so you'll, you'll have them as well. Um, and I, I feel like some of these, uh, different criteria that, that aren't represented, um, through the, or aren't represented on the plan, the zoning bylaws and, and the, uh, the planning board's rules and regulations, in tangent with some of the concerns of, from the Conservation Commission and the Board of Health that might require some substantial reworking of the site. I would recommend that the board continues this hearing.
Thank you. Is there a motion to the chair?
Mr. Chair, can I, I make a, I'll make a motion, but I'd like to just say something personal. Uh, I think, uh, it would be, uh, very hard for us to approve, uh, this project if we're looking at, uh, recommendations to disapprove from the Board of Health, the Conservation Commission, and the Fire Department. And, uh, you mentioned that, well, this may be due to a misunderstanding. Well, you get misunderstandings if you don't have clear information that, um, uh, the boards are looking at. And that, uh, uh, may be because they don't have enough information, which was the point Turner Carey, I think, was talking about. I don't know how many, uh, hearings we had on that, twenty or so. But that's what happens when you're first. So I think that, as the, uh, town planner, Mr. Burr, said, uh, I think he can go over with you issues that need more development, but it also is up to you to, um, get more information to Board of Health, Conservation Commission, Fire Department, more information. So, uh, there aren't misunderstandings. And so when, uh, we set a date for continuance, we're looking at, uh, approval from the Board of Health, approval from the Conservation Commission, approval from the Fire Department. That is a lot easier for us to, uh, uh, grant what you're looking for. And I guess before I would make a motion to, uh, continue, I'd ask you about how much time do you think that takes to provide the, the kind of information that gets us to, that lack of misunderstand, that misunderstanding? Do you need a month, two months? What do you, what do you need, Mr. Comment?
Uh, from a, from a site perspective, do we have, uh, really have to see the comments? But the, the, has the peer review submitted anything yet? Or?
He has, he has not.
He hasn't.
He's not received anything since this afternoon.
You know, that's one of the things that, if I could assess those comments, I'd have a better idea. You know, that some of these other points we can go through, um.
You want, what is it, two months or what do you, you wanna take a guess at how much time you're gonna?
I, I, um, my, my guess. When, when, when do you think the peer review would be in? Because I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna come back in without a peer review.
Sure. Yeah, no, I, I totally understand that point. Um, I followed up with our consultant yesterday, and I have not heard back from him. I was really hoping to have that information to bring before you, um, tonight.
Chair, who's the consultant?
That we don't have that.
And I think one of the critical, um, for me personally, this was, I, I was gonna vote to, and I will vote to continue this because we can't not only, you know, not pay attention to the disapprovals that we have, but, but I have a lot of questions on, you know, the fact that the wetland line hasn't been fixed. You need to get that set with the Conservation Commission so that you can adjust the, the parking lot if you need to. All of that falls back in. So that's a, you know, you, you know, it's your job to figure out what that time is. But, but, but that's certainly in the order of a couple of months to, to get that resolved. And that's one of the critical, you know, one of the critical issues here is, is the layout and the ability to separate yourself from that, that setback. So, uh, you know, I think it begins with conversations with the, with the agents, but, but also getting, getting the wetland file together and getting that line fixed. So that, that we really know what that setback is.
Is that something, excuse me, may I ask a question? Is it usually a requirement to have an AMRAP for, for an NOI or a, a, um, an order of conditions? Cause I, I always thought coming before here, this was kinda first stop. And if you guys approve it, then we'll go to Conservation and finalize it. It's, it's a tough situation to be in, cause we can go get Concom approval and then come back to you guys and you can tear it to shreds.
In the, in the order of things which are important, is, is getting a line of, of wetland line of agreement with the Conservation Commission. Getting that done then sets the, the play, playing field for your design. And, and I, and I take it from the flags and the plan that you've had it done, but it, you, you don't have Conservation Commission's confirmation of that. My, my recommendation would be to get that, at least that done.
So if we did two months, that brings us right in the middle of kind of the holidays. So I would suggest, uh, that we continue until, what's the meeting in January, Mike? I don't have that right, cause I forget.
I don't have it.
So to the second meeting in January. Does that make sense?
I'd like to make a comment.
Yeah.
Again, I believe we're here for the site plan review. Some of the public comment has to address with, where their next step is after they get site plan review, which would be with the selectmen. I'm looking at some of these comments and I think they're minor. I, I think if, if the engineer got the peer review comments, he could address them within a month. Get us before the holidays. I mean, they get a long road ahead of them. I mean, another thing with the public comment is, this area was designated. They don't have any other areas in town to go to. These people sort that out after we've given that designation to this area. I think this is a minor site plan. Uh, I think there's some minor issues into it, and I don't think we should push them out two months.
Well, um, looking at the calendar, uh, six weeks from tonight would be November twenty-eighth, just after Thanksgiving, but ahead of the Christmas period.
Do that.
Do you think that gives, do you think, do you feel that that would give you enough time? So we can get the peer review and?
Yeah, I, I think so. I mean, I, I, um, that would be my goal. I, I certainly, um, don't wanna drag it out.
Look to that.
Get the information and, I'll look at the AMRAP filing and we'll, we'll, um, we'll have information for that meeting. Hopefully the.
Do we have a time on the twenty-eighth?
Um, yeah, uh, we could do six fifteen. Now, we have one?
Yeah, Westport late is at six fifteen and Old Harbor at six thirty, so six forty-five or so.
Okay.
All right. So back to three public hearings, that's twenty-eight. Well, I'll be full of whatever that stuff is they put in Turkey to make you take a nap.
We don't have anything on December 12th.
On December 12th?
Maybe that's better.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the 28th, just heard, has got two other public hearings. I don't think they'll be short.
Yeah, let's do December 12th.
Are you gonna take it easier on us on the 12th?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have our...
All right, I move we continue this public hearing to December 12th. At what, 6:15? 6:15.
Second.
All the favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Shall we move to close the public hearing?
No.
Oh, that's right.
It being passed the time for our 6:20 public hearing on Platte 52, Lot 20A, Marquette Zero Drift Road, a subdivision located between 278 Drift Road and 312 Drift Road. This is a subdivision of a property into nine new lots.
Good evening. Matt Pike with South Coast Engineering on behalf of the applicants. So the proposed Marquette Drive subdivision is located at Platte 52, Lot 20A. So Platte 52, Lot 20A, it's located on the east side of Drift Road, about a mile south of Old County Road. The current lot is accessed by Drift Road by approximately 10-foot-wide gravel car path. The existing lots undeveloped is primarily comprised of woodland, fowl field, and contains approximately 16 acres, about two and a half acres of that is wetland. Within the existing lot, we are proposing a 40-foot-wide roadway layout with a 22-foot-wide paved way to access nine proposed residential lots. Each of the proposed residential lots will contain a single-family dwelling that's accessed by an HMA drive off the proposed way. So along both sides of the proposed way, proposing grass swales with check dams. The swales will terminate at a plunge pool, and that will outlet to a level spreader. And after discharge from the level spreader, it'll pass over a grass fill-in strip and then will terminate in one of the watering wetlands that are on site. In addition to the roadway BMPs, underground infiltration treatments are scheduled to be installed at strategic points adjacent to the proposed dwellings and the HMA drives. So the stormwater treatment BMPs that will reduce trees to recharge the stormwater as required in design accordance with the Mass Stormwater Standards, the Westport Rules and Regulations, Government Subdivision of Land, and the Westport Stormwater Quality Control Regulation. As a whole, both volume rate discharge will be reduced for all storm events. That's the basic overview of the project. We really just received the comments from the peer review this morning. I had a chance to briefly review them, but haven't had a chance to address any of them yet. At this time, I'll turn it over to the board. I can just say that the staff recommendation is going to be to continue the meeting because of that, based on what I received. But I'll turn it over to the board for a discussion of if you have any questions that I can answer.
Thank you. Comments from the board? I had a chance to look at this and actually visit the site over the weekend. And I have significant problems with this subdivision. First of all, I think the geometry doesn't work at all. I think there are at least two lots here that are noncompliant with the zoning. That is, they don't have 50-foot-wide front yards. There's a real question, given that this is a nine-lot residential subdivision, whether or not your right-of-way should be 50 feet. This board has voted to support the Disabilities Commission in this town for requiring sidewalks where there are more than five new homes built. And I, for one, and I think others of the board are sensitive to that commitment that we made to people with disabilities. So the plan as it's submitted right now, I think, has fatal flaws and needs to be changed. We... I got the planner's report, the peer review consultant's report. It just came in yesterday, and I saw that this morning. And I forget exactly how many I have in here. There's a three-page list of comments. So there's a lot of work to be done. And you really need to look at the drainage design because the road is... This is... I don't think we've ever seen an application like this in which the road is paved, but there's no drainage structures in the road. And that's unusual. And the way that you handle drainage is the drainage is sheeted off into roadside ditches. Those ditches are shallow. And I think we have lots of experience in this town where ways are paved and the drainage is handled off the roadside edge in shallow ditches. Matter of fact, I drive through a lot of puddles every time I rain. So it's not a system that works well. And also, the drainage design is not only the conveyance. That is, you take the water and convey it in these swales. You purport to do the stormwater mitigation in the same channel by putting in check dams. I went through the drainage calculations, and there's a lot of magic in them that I don't think work. And I don't think it would function well. And also, there is an existing car path that sits in this property that's encompassed inside of the roadway. It is compliant with our regulations. You can do that, but the way this is designed, you actually block the access to the town's property because the drainage facilities cut across that. The drainage doesn't fit inside the right-of-way. Requires... It would require an easement across all of the lots that you create. It also requires upgrading onto the residual Marquette property. I don't know whether you have the authority to do that or not, but it's unusual to have a drainage solution that doesn't fit... A drainage solution for the road that doesn't fit in the road. We don't normally do that unless you were to put it in a related drainage easement or something across all these lots which doesn't show. So there's... If this lot were to be divided, it's not going to be divided like this because it isn't compliant with our rules and regulations. And if it were to be otherwise divided, there is an awful lot of work to be done. This has all the appearances of a piece of land planning that's really a geometry attempt to maximize the number of lots and not really fit homes onto this piece of property. And even at that, we see a lot of people who take the geometry approach to... Matter of fact, we approved a Form A earlier that was a strange piece of geometry. But this is geometry that doesn't work. That is, it doesn't create buildable lots.
Respectfully, Mr. Chair, I can just address some of those comments. So I can assure you that the geometry is compliant with the regulations.
Well, you'd have to prove that to me.
Sure, I will. We will. I will try. And there are easements for the drainage that's shown on the plan that go along the front of the lots. The drainage does work. I myself have done at least two of these within Westport that are essentially the same design, shallow white in Winaway, that were essentially the same with drainage swales with check dams to a plunge pool and to a grass fill-in strip. So I apologize, my pen isn't working. I wish I could have jotted down all of the comments they had, but I will be sure to address them.
We will. This course is all recorded. You can see every word.
Sure, absolutely.
And of course, we... All of the reports, and the reports for the public, by the way, all of the peer review reports and everything that we've got that are in the planning office are all public documents. You're all... You can all read them. You can all see them. There's nothing... Anything that we have, the public can have. Are there other comments from the board?
I was just gonna say that, I mean, I had many of the same reservations or comments, but our chairman, I think, did an excellent job on expanding upon them. So I really don't have anything else to add.
Mr. Chair, if I could just speak to a couple more of the comments they made. So as far as the sidewalks, we were gonna request to not put the sidewalks in. There is no sidewalks on Drift Road. There's only nine lots within this subdivision. We think there's ample space for the nine lots to walk around in there. There is still access to that town lot to the back. There is a prescribed easement with the car path. The landowner, by right, does have the right to move that easement onto where they're proposing the paved road, so there will still be access to the town lot to the side of the proposed lot. And like I said, I'll be sure to go back and review the tape and jot down all of the comments that you made and be sure we can address those in the future.
Excuse me, I want to treat a drifted road.
I'm sorry. We'll open it to the public in a moment. I need to give the board a chance to speak.
This is a public hearing, so you will get a chance to talk. Mr. Vice Chair, first of all, there is a letter that's been given, and I don't know whether you want it read into the record. I'm happy to do that. It's from David Dorsey. But I have a similar reaction as I look at this on top of looking at the geometric plan that we got earlier this evening. I think that we may need to ask our planning staff to make some changes because I think this zoning by geometry has limitations. And whether or not these conform to zoning, they don't conform to common sense. We're going to end up with lots that may, as the previous attorney said, conform to a buyer and seller today, but they are ridiculous. And this looks like a piece of land that went through a spaghetti machine. You know? It meets the law, but these lots are... They just don't seem to meet common sense in terms of the length and width ratios. And it is an attempt by a builder to cram as many houses as he possibly can into a piece of land that doesn't in any way conform to the rest of the neighborhood. And now, we need to build housing in order to have affordable housing, but you have to have that goal coexist with other goals about maintaining the character of neighborhoods, not overtaxing the ability of the land to provide water for housing, absorb wastewater, and a whole bunch of other goals. And have properties maintain their value. Have a lot actually be able to be enjoyed by the residents of the houses who are going to live there. Be accessible, not have three and a half-foot accessways, as in that previous... You know, these things, yeah, they meet the law, but they don't meet common sense. And that, in some ways, is our fault because we allow that through our zoning. Well, we shouldn't. We should put forth to the town meeting some changes so we don't get spaghetti-shaped lots that are legal. It's not your fault if you're providing something that meets the law. It's our fault that it's legal. So I think, you know, as I say, this is... How can... You know, if you could cram 20 lots on this site, you'd come in here with 20 lots. You don't want to put sidewalks because it costs money. You know? The Disabilities Commission says more than five houses should have sidewalks. So we're gonna say, put sidewalks because if you're gonna have a neighborhood, people should be able to walk around and see their neighbors. But, you know, I understand what your motive is. Anyway, that's my thought.
No, I agree. My colleague, we should be about building nice places to live. And sometimes our own zoning gets in the way of that. Any further comments from the board before I open it to the public? The public, you wish to speak?
Yeah, he took my words about sidewalks.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, before somebody speaks, they need to go to the podium. They need to say their name and their address clearly so that I can hear it better.
Yes, please do that. We're not trying to be...
You want them back? The words I took from you?
No, the way he said, "I appreciate that you're gonna build some houses there, but I think it's too many."
You need to tell us who you are, where you live.
My name is Sonia Camly. And we own the first house. 312 Drifted Road.
Drift Road?
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, Sonia. What's your comment?
My comment is regarding sidewalks. We need to build something that we'll be proud of, the way he said, the disabled people can just use the sidewalks, and that's a nice area. So I think nine lots. My lot is over here, and that street is too narrow to go down. So if they can do something that they can have sidewalks and make their development nicer, I think he... Whatever he said, that was my thoughts.
Thank you.
Are you positive where he is the point?
Thank you. Yes?
My name is David Dorsey of the 11th Calm Drive. So how many minutes?
Five minutes.
Okay, I'll do this. So as an abiding property owner, I'm here in strenuous opposition to the subdivision plan. Here are my reasons. First of all, well, I'll go to my last one first. The arrangement of closely grouped houses is radically different from the rest of the neighborhood and the surrounding area. This will affect the overall character of the neighborhood. I urge you, as one of you did, to take a walk along the road to the town pit to assess what the impact of this development would be on the neighborhood. And then I have some other objections. The impact on the local water table and aquifer have not been defined, raising the concern that this development would cause a significant drawdown of the water table. I believe that there should be a formal hydrology report to allow a full assessment of the potential impact on the local water resources, particularly the butters like me who have wells and septic systems nearby. My second point is that the proposed widening of the access road has a number of significant problems which have already been addressed. The placement of the road is, for me, the most egregious aspect of the development plan, as you can see where I would be.
Yeah, go ahead.
Point to where I am. This is me. The address of Mrs. Cole's, not 11, it's 7. But this is where I would be, right where that would be the dead line's curve. The section of the road that will run along the southern border of my property, the surveyor's measurement on the planning document differs from those on the town plot plan, and I'm not an expert on surveying, but the line of demarcations of established historic stone wall, that's the southern border of my property that's shown on the town plot plan, and there's a discrepancy in the numbers of the surveyor's plan. And I don't understand surveying, but the numbers are clearly different, and I think they should be the same. So what's the reason for this discrepancy in survey data? I suggest humbly that the planning board might ask for a new survey to reconcile these discrepancies. It's of the utmost importance to me because the proposal shows that a concrete retaining wall as high as three feet is going to be constructed along this line of demarcation where there is currently a historic stone wall that is also the southern edge of my property. And then another point that was addressed is there's no real plan to mitigate the effect of the water drainage from the road to the north near my property, and this will definitely affect the adjacent wetland on my property that normally forms a rather large vermic pool. The elevation of this proposed road will certainly increase the amount of water drainage into this area. I'm concerned that any increased drainage into this area will encourage the breeding of mosquitoes and other insect pests. As you know, mosquitoes are significant vectors of diseases such as eastern equine encephalitis and west Nile disease that have been found in this area. Aside from the effects on the wetland, the drainage from the road running along my property will go north onto my adjacent property that is two feet below the grade of proposed road. There's no reason that I should have to suffer a deterioration of my property because of proposed development. Our property on the southern border will certainly become a swale, a marsh, and will be unusable. The immensely increased traffic from the usage of this proposed road will cause significant noise and light nuisances that will affect me and my neighbors directly. And lastly, well, if the HOA, the Homeowners Association, that's going to be responsible for maintaining this road, is derelict in its duties, then I will suffer the increased drainage off the road if they don't clear the drainage areas, and I won't have any recourse with the town or state lot to go after the homeowners association. Then the plan proposes nine wells and nine septic systems that will be grouped very closely together. Despite the percolation tests and testing results, there's no estimation of the effect of nine closely grouped septic systems and nine wells on the overall hydraulics of the land, nor is there a projection of the effects on the hydrology and adjacent vermic pools. I'm concerned about the significant drawdown of the water table. So that's all I had to say. Thank you for your consideration.
And you have your letter, too.
Good evening, planning board. My name is Jacob McWigan. Address is both that 202 Drift Road and 397 Drift Road. So I'd like to echo the sentiments that you guys have laid out, obviously, on the concern and has been addressed by the gentleman prior to me. We all sit on the Climate Resiliency Committee as a member from the Conservation Commission and you members on the planning board. One of the top three issues is water scarcity here in Westport, whether we're dealing with it in the harbor, whether we're dealing with it in a high-density, nine-lot subdivision where that'll be stressing the aquifers, and you guys have big mentioned that, so I won't spend time or effort on that because you guys have already addressed that, but I think that has to be a major concern. We're lucky this year, first year in 10 summers where we haven't had a drought in Westport, and, you know, everything has kind of come back up from a water table, but we don't believe that in the long term that's going to be what's happening. But what I would like to do, and I don't know if I mentioned, but in full disclosure, I'm a member of the Conservation Commission as well. For the first time, I think, in town, my professional background is coming into play here. I work for the National Shooting Sports Foundation. They have a trade association for the firearms industry, and we represent ranges, retailers, and manufacturers across this country. I've spent many hours and many state capitals dealing with what I call a four-letter word, and that's lead. And you're probably sitting there wondering where I'm going to go with this. And where I'm going to go with this is the project location that the individual submitted specifically laid out that that portion of land to the south of the development is town land that has been used as a shooting range for many, many years. Obviously, the people around here can attest to that. I jokingly, because of who I work for, tell my wife, "That's the sound of freedom when we hear it coming from the sandpit." Where am I going with this? How is the town going to deal with a situation with that land that most likely has decades' worth of lead ammunition in it? I'm saying decades. So you're going to put a subdivision there with nine house lots that's going to disturb the land, which I guarantee there was shooting up in that cornfield and various other things, and basically create a situation where lead is released into the environment? And what I'm going to say to that is, the decades where the shooting had occurred there, we recently brought fill-in from the school. So what happened when you brought the fill-in? You then encapsulated the lead into the environment and into the land. So we can all recognize that the toxicity of lead is broad and nonpartisan, right? We all know the issues. We all know that can lead to issues, developmental issues for children. But let me just give you a few stats. This is from an environmental working group nationwide. They have a study. I'd be more than happy to submit it to you. I have numerous other studies. While most of this lead is likely on that site over the decades, we need to realize the potential liability to the town, to the nearby property owners who may find themselves living next to a hazardous waste site and victims of lead drifting onto this nine-acre high-density development. I don't know if there's going to be a situation where the town can identify themselves in that. That's my concern. Let's just look at some statistics and some data. A single shot from a .30-30 Winchester round MAMM, which we all know is a hunting caliber, maybe other people don't know, but I do, contains about... Has enough lead, which is 8.1 grams, to contaminate 370 cubic feet of soil, which would make that a superfund site. 22 caliber rimmed fire ammunition could contaminate one day's worth of drinking water for the entire population of Salt Lake City. Obviously, this has to be a concern for this developer and for the individuals that would be buying these homes. How are you going to keep children from going down into that open space, playing in that soil, bringing that back into the household? And then all these people that are sitting here from the neighborhood, once you start digging foundations, once you start digging septic systems, once you start digging wells, you're going to obviously contaminate and open up situations where there could be soil and where this lead is released into the environment. I, for one, if you gave me a free house in that nine-acre subdivision, I would take it. I know the data. I know the background. I know the issues with it. The federal government considers that children playing outdoors is at risk of lead poisoning if concentrations of lead in the soil where the child is playing are higher than 400 parts per million. So the soil from outdoor play, a child brings the tiniest amount home in what the EPA calls normal hand-to-mouth activity. In other words, a child plays outside in the sandpit, comes back in, has dirt in their hands, brings it into the household, eats food without washing their hands. That's going to be a major issue. May not be in your lifetime, may not be in my lifetime, but somebody's going to come after the town for having that exposure at what you would consider a superfund site. So let me just give you a few more stats. Lead will migrate more quickly in sandy soil. Is that a sandpit? I believe so. And then coupled with the fact that it now has been encapsulated and covered on top of that. And when we deal with ranges, ranges have... We do remediation with ranges. We've worked with the EPA. You have a buffer zone. You have a, excuse me, you have a backstop. You clean that. You take that soil out. You do the necessary work to make it correct, put it, you know, and then they do cleaning, sometimes on a yearly basis. We know for decades that sandpit has not been touched. The lead contained in even a single bullet can contaminate the amount of water consumed by daily all these people in that neighborhood. Families living near firing ranges could be drinking water from their private well, and this is from the study quoted, "private well that is contaminated with lead and is leached from the raging soil." So again, this is a situation that, as you had to discuss more on the planning board side, that these individuals are doing high-density housing, doing nine lots, putting, I would imagine, let's assume, an average of four people, 36 people in this area, that all could have a situation where they are essentially exposed to lead or lead contamination. And again, I've lived, I grew up at 210 Drift Road, been there, I'm 46 years old, and I can't tell you a time period where I had not heard fire, fire and ammo coming out of that sandpit. Everyone around here is used to it.
Yes.
Right? We're all used to it. But that's a situation I think, I think the town just needs to put in the back of their mind. It's not, you know, not necessarily a planning board issue, but I think it could be a long-term liability issue, and any developer that takes that risk on is probably making a huge mistake. And, you know, there will be some grassroots, and I wanted this on the public record, that there could be a lead issue with that situation. So I appreciate your time. I'm always in your position.
We're in the five.
So thank you, sir. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
Yes, did you?
Could I ask a question?
You may.
In light of Mr. McWigan's comments, I happen to know that my well water doesn't have any lead in it, but I'm far away. Is it necessary for the town to require the developer to test the aquifer before being granted the right to develop the property? Is that... Is there a precedent for that?
There is not. It is not normally something that we do. Would you like to respond to the comments?
Yes. So I just want to address some of the misconceptions of this, of these lots. Yeah, so idea of high density, et cetera, et cetera, but these lots are, as per zoning, they're all 60,000-plus square foot lots. If you look at the, I hear, if the town site is a superfund site, which I don't think it is, this site is not a superfund site. There is no lead contamination that we know of on this site. And but if you just zoom out onto the aerial map, I mean, I hear closeness to the sandpit and high density. I mean, you have found a drive. I count 20-plus lots in very close vicinity to this sandpit. So what I just want to close it by saying, I want to come, I want to revise the plans as I've been given the notes by the peer reviewer. I want to come to something that's palatable for the town, for the planning board, for the neighbors, and just hope that we can come to something that's palatable to the town somewhat.
Tom Ploner, do you have further comments?
The only other further comment I would add at this point, there are a number of issues that do need to be addressed in the plans themselves. But I do want to restate what you had said previously, that three of the proposed lots do not meet the zoning bylaw standards. They do not meet Section 7, 7112, the minimum lot width standard. I can send that to you, but I don't find, having reviewed this plan in pretty fine detail, I don't find that they meet the zoning bylaw standards.
Is there a motion to continue?
Yes, I will make the motion if that's the pleasure.
When should we schedule the continuance?
The 12th. December 12th.
December 12th.
Yeah. What's that, eight weeks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect. Yeah, thank you.
All right. So I move that we continue this hearing until December the 12th at?
6:30.
6:30 PM.
Good job.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I appreciate your time.
We'll see you all in the 12th.
So on that, your recommendations, Michael, about street width and everything else you've got sidewalks, the developer will know that within the next eight weeks.
So that's correct. I sent the developer's consultant, who just left with it. I sent him my report earlier today and the consulting engineer's report as well.
So he'll have your comments?
Right.
Okay. All right, good. I know the hearings close and continue. Can I just make another comment? I do want to say...
Sorry.
Sure. Regarding the street width, I know there's a discrepancy within the planning board regulation. The chart does call for 50-foot width. The detail on the next page, it says 50-foot for a collector's street, 40-foot for a residential street. So I know there's a discrepancy in that. And as far as the sidewalk, like I said, I want, I hope we can come to something that's palatable for everybody, and but I also just hope that we could be, you know, basically treated the same as previous, you know, subdivisions that have been approved in the recent past, one being Stacy Lane's. That was recently approved. That was over four lots and does not have sidewalks.
Well, we will get your comments, and I'll also get you... I've done a markup of the plans and done some... plans and done some looking at the drainage calculations, and I'll get you my comments as well.
Sure. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Plan this report.
Yes, let me get my notes. I'll be quick with this report. So on Friday last week, I submitted a $146,000 grant across with the Community Compact Cabinet IT Grant. So if we're awarded these funds, I kind of alluded to this a little bit when we first started, we'll have funds to acquire and implement online permitting, licensing, and inspection request service across all town departments. So we'll see what happens with that. Next, I have our results from the Buzzards Bay National Asheries Program grant. We received $25,000 to do work on the town's municipal storm sewer, so doing catchment and precipitation and some other. But we did not receive funds for nitrogen-reusing septic, community septic system, et cetera. So that was the big ticket item we were applying for through that grant program, and it was not funded. For our, an update on our Snell Creek Conservation Project, we, the planning board applied for this grant. It was also through the Buzzards Bay National Asheries Program, and the purpose of this grant is to put 25 acres of land into conservation at the headwaters of the Snell Creek. It's a tributary to the East Branch, and so I just want to let you all know that the conservation restriction is nearly ready, and that means the town's about to close, so that property will be put in the conservation probably sometime at the turn of the year. And for an update on our MVP 2.0 grant, we just, I just sent over our contract with Serped, and Conditioning Leaders is going to be our subcontractor. Regarding our Route 6 rezoning project, we met with BSC Group last week. We finalized meeting materials for the first rezoning public meeting. That's going to be at the library on November 1st at 6:00 PM. And BSC Group is going to provide us advertising materials as well to put on the town website and visit different businesses and the Route 6 corridors and to see if there are places where we can put out posters and whatnot. And this is an update from Amy about the Plymouth Boulevard stormwater upgrades. She spoke with Paul Perlin last week about collaborating with Fall River to develop mailing lists comprised of all the homeowners along the South Wootup Pond in order to provide them with future mailings of targeted specific information on how to help with the phosphorus issue. This type of mailing would also help the city of Fall River and the town fulfill an aspect of the MS4 relating to public outreach and education. And then lastly, just an update on staffing. Amy's obviously not here today. She is going to be out until, she'll be back on Friday if anyone wants to see her, and then she'll be out for two weeks, and then she'll be working from home, as she's able to, for an additional four weeks after that point. She has a procedure. She's a member.
Why is that?
Me, I can let you know when we're, when we close the meeting.
She's not working, though, this week. She's on vacation, is that?
She's on vacation this week, though. Oh, sorry, that's all.
Are there, I had a, just a general question, has nothing to do with matters before the planning board, but there was a lot of activity at the fish market, including the new deck and everything on that. That doesn't come before us, but are you in discussion with the building inspector about what that's all about?
It's funny you bring that up. I was supposed to be in a meeting with the Board of Health, Building Inspector, I think maybe Conservation, last week on Friday, and the meeting got canceled. Jim wanted an update on the Old Harbor Road proposal, and so it was locked in with some of the projects, and there was going to be an update on that as well. Yesterday, they were doing utility work in the ground, so that's why the part of the term radius was closed off. I don't know exactly what the full extent of that project is.
Are there other administrative boards?
How about the wide broadband work that's started? You know what's going on with that, or?
I'm not sure.
I mean, that's, you know, something about what, you know, like moving forward with infrastructure. I think broadband is part of infrastructure, and I am not sure what we're planning, like for town meeting with our sewer and water, on coming up with some infrastructure, an infrastructure commission instead of an oversight committee, that we could possibly hire an engineer to handle these matters. It just seems that, you know, we're, this is the second round of broadband being installed, and we haven't done one water service. So I just, hang on. I think maybe we should talk on town meeting on, you know, on the other side, on the selectmen. Where are the water commissioners, and we haven't had one meeting, so I'm trying to push to get that done, too. But I think we need to make some kind of decision before a town meeting on how we operate this. We have issues with the water, with the water department that's being handled by the town administrator, I believe. But I think we need to get somebody on board that can, you know, put all this stuff in. So I don't know. How do you feel about creating a commission for sewer-water infrastructure that, I mean, it's going to, should encompass all infrastructure, you know?
Whether or not, without a town engineer or public works or anything, we're all sort of tackling it piecemealing by committees.
Exactly.
It's definitely not the way to plan a long-term investment.
And that, well, it's a serious investment, and we've spent a lot of money in different areas that sure should be directed different ways. All right, I'm going to try to bring something up with the selectmen, and try to move forward and trying to create something like that.
All right. If there's nothing else?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Aye. We are adjourned.